...of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I thank everyone for their attendance, and if the minutes can reflect the attendance of various trustees and staff, let's move on to item three. Entertained motion for the approval of the eleven eighteen Village Board Meeting Minutes and the file of ten ten twenty nineteen Architectural Review Board, ten twenty two Plan Commission, ten twenty three Park and Rec Board Meeting Minutes as presented.
Make the motion.
Motion second. As all those comments, questions, clarifications on the minutes.
Hi, one correction on page three of Village Board Meeting Minutes, November eighteen. Set the bottom of page three under Report of Board Public Works. That paragraph under the motion identifies proposed repair to well three. It should be well two.
The others? All right, okay, motion second with that one correction. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That motion passes. Anybody in the audience wish to turn it on non-adjunct item tonight, non-agenda? Get some forward. I have five business presented by the president tonight where we are going to go through the appointment process for filling in the vacant trustee applicant interview and appointment. We will use a similar format as we had in the past. We have six questions. We have six trustees. Each trustee will have one question. We'll go on the order from left to right. So Tom will have question one, Dee will have question two, we'll have three, four, and five. Every candidate will have an opportunity to answer the same question. You take notes, and then a short closing statement, maybe a minute or so from each candidate. I will turn it over to Jesse.
Certainly. Please pardon the scratch. I'll work through my IFC here that kind of summarizes more of what the village president mentioned. So back in October, the village board took action to fill the vacancy by an appointment process versus holding a special election. That said, the open seat was posted via Village's website and on our social media account, and therefore we took application submittals with a deadline of November twenty second. It should be noted that this particular seat being filled, the term goes into the spring of 2021. So what we have here this evening is a set of standardized interview questions. Copies are here with the board, but also at the front table for the applicants to follow along with as they are asked. So this appointment process is actually set forth in accord with an adopted resolution dating back to 1997, so this process has been used several times before. We are required to have open session interviews of the interested candidates. The interview schedule was actually set forth this evening by a random draw conducted by the village clerk's office in the front offices of Village Hall. So tonight, we have five candidates interviewing with us, and the order of interviews or the schedule is as follows. Candidate number one, Anne Marie Wenton. Candidate two, Amy Luft. Candidate three, James Miller. Candidate four, Daniel Delort. Candidate five, Louis Hero. Following all of the interviews, and actually, let me back up one second. So while these are conducted in open session as part of an open public meeting, we will ask as a courtesy if the other candidates would step out into the committee room while an individual interviews. You do not have to do this as a candidate. Again, this is an open public meeting, however, we ask out of courtesy if you would wish to do that. Moving forward, again, all the interviews held in open session. The village board members, as the village president mentioned, will round robin a set of standard questions. At the end of all of the interviews, the village board members will vote via a written preference ballot that includes a signature line. This becomes part of the official record of the meeting. The written ballots, as mentioned, include a signature line. That way, we can avoid any misconceptions of any sort of secret ballot process. Again, these all become part of the meeting record. As I mentioned, this is a similar process as we have previously used, set forth in an adopted resolution. So that said, the ballots, the aforementioned ballots will be collected, and then a tally will be read aloud by the village attorney. What this will do is the highest vote getters based on that ballot preference will move into, I guess, the discussion or further consideration. The ballot process can continue as long as needed if there are any ties or a clear consensus isn't identified. That said, once a consensus is identified through this written ballot process, the board could move forward with a formal motion at that time. Again, I'd like to stress, all of this occurs in open session. Last but not least, after that formal action to appoint a new board member, the newly appointed board member will be sworn in towards the tail end of this meeting, and their first official full meeting will be December sixteenth. So included with the report for this evening was that resolution setting forth the process, one copy of the preference ballot, I do have extras if needed, and then the application materials received by the clerk's office from each of the candidates. I understand there was a cover letter from one of the candidates that was put on the dais this evening for the board, inadvertently not included in the package, so the board members do have that. Mike, did I cover that fully?
I believe so.
Thank you.
You vote with your ballots once a majority is reached, that a motion can be entertained.
All right, thank you. So, Anne, you want to show the candidates that are not better than Anne, remain in the committee room, if you wish to, again, respect the wishes of the other candidates as far as who can answer some more conflicting show?
I see that the questions have been updated from last year, and I'm wondering, what was the process for that?
The process for that was I polled other nearby municipalities that went through appointment processes and looked to update our questions utilizing different formats, but to get still pertinent information for applicants, to create a standardized set of questions. That said, if there are follow-ups by board members, that can be asked, however, a standardized set was generated to be used.
I'm sorry, Anne Marie. My bad. So again, as stated, we have six standardized questions, of which you'd be invited to give a closing statement. Keep it within that minute or so. Range that to be okay?
No, don't make a statement out of mouth, please.
Correct. All right, Tom?
Sure. Okay, Tom, please tell us about yourself, your qualifications, and why you were interested in serving as a village trustee.
My name is Anne Marie Wenton. I am interested in the community, which is why I'm interested in becoming a village trustee. I have over twenty years of service in plumbing and steam fitting. I was a foreman on several of those jobs, so I do have some qualifications in contracts, bringing in jobs on time, managing stock, and things like that.
Anne Marie, what do you view the role of a trustee?
I view the role of a trustee as representing the community in what is best for the community.
What do you see as the two biggest priorities the village board must address in the coming year?
Well, I think that we have too many TIF districts, and I think we are growing faster in size than what we are able to expand the departments that serve the community.
Thank you.
What do you like about living in the village of Grafton?
I love the feeling of community. I like going into the stores and being able to run into people that I like. I love the parks and the rep department. I feel safe here in this community.
As a board member, how would you deal with a recommendation from a board, commission, or committee, or department head with which you do not agree?
Well, if I don't agree, then I guess I would be unable, if that's what you're asking. I feel that my job as a trustee would be to look at both sides of the situation and then decide, having the facts, what my vote should be.
Hi. If you have not regularly attended meetings, are you able to dedicate the necessary time to attending the village board and committee meetings, preparing for meetings ahead of time, and staying in regular communication with the village president and/or the village administrator?
Well, I already have attended the vast majority of village board meetings, public safety committee meetings, and some finance committee meetings. I do already, just as a resident, frequently go over minutes, the agenda, and so on. I already have dedicated that time. Thank you.
Okay, that's our six questions. So if you have a closing statement or any kind of statement?
Well, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to present myself for an appointment with the village board. I've been a resident of Grafton for fifteen years. I've demonstrated my commitment to this community by my regular attendance at village board meetings over the past three years. I interviewed for this position in 2018, and by running for the village trustee this past spring, I have also shown my commitment to this position. Trustee Gasser indicated during the appointment process last fall that the community already had voted for him. He was the highest runner-up behind the incumbents then. He was appointed as trustee. In the spring election for village trustee, I came in fourth behind the three incumbents, receiving nine hundred and sixty-three votes, so the community has already voted for me. I would bring with me twenty years of construction background as a journeyman, plumber, and a steam fitter. I have the experience of bringing contracts in on time and under budget, and I believe that my appointment to the board would further reflect the balance of the community. I would like to be more involved in the process of retaining the appeal that brought people to Grafton in the first place and maintain the quality of services that keep our residents happy to be here.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
So again, we have a little bit. We have basically six questions. You have the opportunity to answer each one of those, and then at the end, the kind of statement you wish to make. So that being said, we'll go ahead and get started right away.
First question for you, Amy. Please tell us about yourself, your qualifications, and why you are interested in serving as a village trustee.
Thank you. So my family and I have lived in Grafton for twenty-two-plus years, have raised our children here, gone through the entire school system, practiced our faith here, and different opportunities in our life. We both have worked in Grafton. I feel that my qualifications as a leader that I have taken on with the American Legion family as a district president and as a grassroots beginner with the Stars and Stripes Honor Flight program has allowed me leadership skills in addition with my sales and marketing roles in the senior industry. And my interest for serving on trustee is really to get more involved with the community. I find that this time in my life, I would like to take an additional step on being a leader within our community. I also would like to be an advocate for our citizens, and I want to learn about the government structure at the same time.
Amy?
Hello.
What do you view the role of a trustee?
I view the role of a trustee as being the face of our community for our residents and being a voice for them, especially for those who can't voice their opinion, but being an advocate. So for whether it's a citizen or whether it's a business in our community, and allowing that to be a bridge, get the information back to the board, and being transparent to our citizens and our businesses.
What do you see as the two biggest priorities the village board must address in the coming year?
Well, one of the biggest priorities for sure is the growth of our community and how we're going to manage that. I am all for business development, but I believe we have to make sure it's managed correctly. I have not held the role on the village board at all, so I am here to learn, but I view myself as a decision maker and helper within the community. So I see that as one of the major priorities is our growth, which I am in favor of. I think the second biggest priority is keeping our businesses in the downtown area and keeping that growth alive. And what can we do to make that look different, keeping our past and our history there, but also engaging the growth that we have towards I-43, that downtown businesses have to know that they are part of our community and they're very important to us.
What do you like about living in the village of Grafton?
I love the small-town feel, but also having the option of having that development that we're seeing. I'll be honest, after my kids grew up and moved out, my husband and I moved away for a couple of years, and I couldn't stand it anymore, so I begged him to come back to Grafton because to me, this is home. This is a safe community. I love that we have a great school system here. I love that we have an outstanding fire department and police department, and I think overall that the citizens are very happy here. I think we have something that Cedarburg and Port Washington don't have, and that's logistically where we are located. It's an easy on-off commute to build right here in Grafton, which we're seeing a lot of future development coming up, and families want that. That, together with a great school system, great businesses, there's no reason we shouldn't be a leader in Ozaki County for families to move to.
As a board member, how would you deal with a recommendation from a board, commission, or committee, or department head with which you do not agree?
Well, unfortunately, I deal a lot with this with the American Legion and sometimes with Honor Flight as well. It's really important to make sure that you listen more than you speak and listen to both sides of the argument or the question that's being posed, and to really look into the facts of what's behind it. I know a lot of times it's hard when there's friendships, and it's sometimes not easy to take a side versus not, but really, you have to look at what's the best thing for our community and the best thing for the people here.
If you have not regularly attended meetings, are you able to dedicate the necessary time to attending the village board and committee meetings, preparing for meetings ahead of time, and staying in regular communication with the village president and/or the village administrator?
Yes, I am. I'm lucky to have a fortunate employer where I have flexibility, which has allowed me to be with the American Legion throughout the years and with Honor Flight, so I have no problem at all being able to communicate with the board and have the flexibility to prepare for the meetings ahead of time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's our six questions. So if you have any kind of statement that you wish to present to the board?
Other than I'm really here to learn, I want to get more involved in the community. I'd like to learn more about how the government works within our community. I am an advocate for our citizens, especially the seniors and the veterans and those that don't have a voice. So if I can be the face of the trustees and the board for our businesses and the people here, that's really what I would like to do and take a little bit more active role within my community.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. So there was an opening statement. Would you like me to give that now or when we're done?
Well, wait until we're done.
Okay.
We have basically, as we stated in the opening and discussion, that each of us has a single question for you, and once we're through those, they can give a statement.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Jim?
Yes, hi.
First question for you is, please let us, please tell us about yourself, your qualifications, and why you are interested in serving as a village trustee.
I've been a pretty much lifelong resident of the village over forty years. Been a member of two different park and rec boards for approximately twenty-five years, about fifteen here in Grafton, ten in the city of Port Washington. I have a degree in political science with an emphasis on state and local government, including an internship at the city of McQuan under the direction and guidance of the assistant city administrator, and just would like to try and contribute what I can to the board.
Thank you. Hi, Jim.
Hi.
What do you view the role of a trustee?
To be a part of a team, to advance the agenda of various departments, support department heads, and try and improve the quality of life for the village.
What do you, what do you see as the two biggest priorities the village board must address in the coming year?
Well, one thing that did concern me about attending the last few meetings, I feel a little better about is our vacant businesses, and I think Ms. Wolf is, from attending the last couple of meetings, trying to address that. So I'm encouraged in that regard. That would be the only thing that's kind of a concern of mine.
Hi. What do you like about living in the village of Grafton?
Well, a number of things. My family moved here in nineteen fifty-six, so I've seen this community grow from a little over three thousand when we moved here to what it is now. And it certainly has increased in population, increased in the number of schools. It's night and day since when I moved here. You moved here, you went to the store, you knew everybody. That's not the case anymore. You have all the development on the west, or excuse me, on the east side, which wasn't here. So Grafton has come a long way since nineteen fifty-six, when my family and I moved here.
As a board member, how would you deal with a recommendation from a board, commission, or committee, or department head with which you do not agree?
I think it's real important, being on a board, that that board gets support from the village board. If you don't agree with whatever recommendation comes from that board, I think you can voice your opinion, but I think the plan commission, park and rec, library board, et cetera, et cetera, those boards are there and they serve a function. And I think it's important that the village board supports their decision-making.
Hi, Jim.
Hi.
If you have not attended meetings, are you able to dedicate the necessary time to attending village board and committee meetings, preparing for meetings ahead of time, and staying in regular communication with the village president and/or the village administrator?
Yes, and my attendance, I think, the past twenty-five years in park and rec speaks for itself. I have cleared my schedule, which includes quite a bit of support work for the Grafton School District. I have cleared my schedule Monday through Thursday. I still am working in the support staff role for the school district on Friday evenings. I don't think there's any conflicts. I'm somewhat familiar with the process with the family history, so I know that there are meetings Monday through Thursday somewhat often, maybe two or three times a week. I have cleared my schedule to make sure I can attend those meetings. My attendance is a top priority for me.
Thank you.
All right, those are the six questions. So if you have now an opportunity to make a personal statement?
It's, it's a little redundant. Been a resident of Grafton for forty years, moved in here with my family in nineteen fifty-six. Since that time, I've watched the village grow and prosper. I've got a bachelor's degree and majoring in political science with an emphasis in state and local government, including a semester internship at the city of McQuan under the guidance of the assistant city administrator. I have served two different communities, the city of Port Washington, the village of Grafton, as a member of the park and rec boards respectively for approximately twenty-five years. I currently work at the Grafton School District in the support staff role and junior varsity golf coach. I've been a member of the WI double-A for forty-nine years. And I look forward to answering questions, but I've already asked, so thank you.
I appreciate it. As we stated, we have a series of standardized questions that the trustees will ask, and after orders, you need to give a statement of your own. So we will have you start with Tom.
Okay. Anne, please tell us about yourself, your qualifications, and why you are interested in serving as a village trustee.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. I think the biggest question here is why I'm always a service of a village trustee. And I see that there are people who sometimes have reasons to become a servant, a village servant, because something happened to them. I certainly don't have that. I really want to be able to serve. I've served in this community for many years, within our church. I've served within other service groups. Outside of this group, I've served as a volunteer firefighter and EMT and also a user of Edson. So I have a lot of experience in community service. As far as myself, my qualification, I have a degree in business administration. I have forty-one years of management experience. I've directed some very large companies. Currently, I work at the VA, and I'm looking at probably my last six months of most of the people who don't even know I'm company on the dais until I retire. But right now, I'm working at the VA as a section chief leader and well-first in government care, government compliance, and just generally looking at and from the perspective, how would that look in the paper tomorrow if he did that? And I think it's really a good guide for us to do good care. So I think from a qualification standpoint, and my business degree, my years of experience, we fit very well within this group.
Thank you. What do you view the role of a trustee?
I view the role of trustee as being a, as being a servant within the community. What does that really look like? I'm not really sure of that. But I think it should look at how we, I look at the group here. I don't think there's a benefit. There's a wonderful group of folks up here who really believe in this service. Perhaps it's about believing in this service. As a trustee, what I would look at doing is listening to the patients that come from people. I think being a good listener is key to this position. Working with them, the other trustees to come up and deliver and develop consensus, really trying to find out what is really best in the village, and also doing active community work in certain circumstances to explain the decisions that were made and get out in public and somebody say, "Why do you guys do that?" Well, no, I think the best thing I can answer is it was a decision of the board based on the best information we have for the success of the community. Yes, I understand your road might have been torn up for a while, and your car might have been a little bit dirty, but it's for the best of the community. And that was made with a lot of decisions and a lot of thought process. So as a trustee, I would think that that would be part of making the decisions, being involved. So as a trustee, I would think that that would be part of making decisions, being well informed, because I've learned more about this as I've attended meetings since August. And I've learned a lot about how this group functions, and I really love the functioning of the previous.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. What do you see as the two biggest priorities the village board must address in the coming year?
Well, I think, I think the big thing is that we can't, we can't get so expensive as a community that we make it too costly for folks to live here. I think that a lot of work has been done with the budget, and I think this group did a fantastic job with the budget, trying to keep it under the consumer price range. I think that's really important. I think people get a sense that, you know, the costs are going up, and certainly with some of the constraints the state and state has put on us, it's hard for us to generate additional revenue. But I think that's a big priority, is being able to evaluate our expenses, keep a very close eye on our expenditures, and you know, actually make sure that we live the budget. The second thing is, is that I think that's our, our second priority, is really looking at our empty buildings within our community. How can we best utilize those, those, those buildings? How can we generate them for industrial and commercial use? I know all of you have been looking on that. That's a really hard thing, but I think, you know, we look at the east side of town, very well thought of, very well developed, and that's great. But our western and southern end of our town have some vacancies, and I think that being able to fill those vacancies really leads to a more vibrant community.
Thank you.
What do you like about living in the village of Grafton?
Oh, I can tell you so many things, but I'll keep it short. First of all, I love feeling safe in my own community. For example, I think we have a fantastic police department and a fantastic fire department. It's well worth the expectations that we are making up. I think the best thing is, the other day, I remember downstairs watching TV, it's nine thirty at night, and I hit a knock on the door. I'm actually working, and my wife said, "Did you forget the door open?" I said, "No, that was a clock." She said, "You need to use your hearing check." I didn't hear you put it on that. But when I opened the door, and here's one of our young police officers saying, "Yeah, I'm just doing a little shut down. You okay?" I'm fine. I just had a nine eleven call. And we mapped this house. And I said, "Oh, what's the number?" And she wants to, "That's not my number. Is everything okay here?" My wife comes up here and says, "Yeah, I'm fine. He just can't hear or anything." So a police officer came here and checked out. That didn't happen in Milwaukee. I have some folks that, that lived in Milwaukee, who had an actual break-in, with the person in their home. It took one and a half hours for a police officer to arrive. That is unacceptable. Here, I feel safe. I feel the police and fire are accessible, and feel the legislature is successful to deal with issues that I may have that might not be able to be, and very unlikely, the fact that our village staff can handle it.
As a board member, how would you deal with a recommendation from a board, commission, or committee, or department head with which you do not agree?
Oh, it's a good question. I think the easiest way to say I don't agree. However, I think the biggest part of this is, we attempt to, attempt to get consensus, is ask that person, you know, I'm not convinced of this. And this is my vision that I have of this. Convince me that this is the right thing to do. Just ask for that, and listen. And I think a lot of times, I think, as I look at communication, as you explained, we're also ramped up to your point across that we want to listen. I think listening is just important. It's like, I mean, I do a story, I have two years to listen, if there's one more to talk. We listen a little more than we talk a little less. Some type of people dig to that point, but I think really, just on my side. I'm convinced, like I said, what information am I missing? How can you convince me to be able to do this? If I, I just don't see that at this point in time.
Hi. If you have not regularly attended meetings, are you able to dedicate the necessary time to attending village board meetings, committee meetings, preparing for meetings ahead of time, and staying in regular communication with the village president and/or administrator?
I think that's another fantastic question. You guys are all have such great questions. Right, if you know them all. No, I'm gonna be at meetings. I'll be honest with you, I work, I work nights, you know, from about thirty till about three o'clock. I'm home, I can come to the meetings. Already, since August, I can come to the meetings regularly, for some of the subcommittee meetings, and I prep myself, by looking at the information. Yep, I do have an iPad here. I like to save trees, and I like the waste tree that I keep up to date. So I, I, keeping in regular communication to, to be able to look at what I see there. I would rather deal with that in a committee, or with a question, instead of dealing with that in front of the public. Unless it's something that hasn't been answered. But certainly, if I had a question of, you know, something going on with, with the street department, I would, I would contact Amber and talk with her about this. Hey, I'm, I'm concerned about this. What do we do? You know, if I have something that, you know, I, it doesn't make sense, I'd pick up the phone and call Jessica and say, "Hey, Jessica, do you have a chance to meet?" I know that is a guy, but I'm confused on this. Convince me why I'm thinking the way I am is wrong, so I can come to consensus at the meeting.
All right, thank you. Those were the, I think those were the six questions. So if you'd like to make a statement?
Yep, just a brief statement here. Thank you so much for considering me for this position. I think I'm a really good addition to this group. I know most of you. I know the hard work that you do, and I appreciate every time you do for Amber. I'd like to tell you that I'm available. I think I've told you that in the beginning. So I'd really like to be more involved in the community, and to be able to see what I can do, to make your jobs easier, and also to be a private member, to be a private member of this community.
All right, thank you very much. Hey, Lou, as we discussed earlier, we'll be, we have six questions. One for each trustee, after which you'll be allowed to make a statement on your behalf. Okay?
Well, first of all, thank you all for-
We'll wait for the statement till afterwards.
We'll have to be hoping, and that's a thank.
Okay, I'm gonna start the questions. Lou, please tell us about yourself, your qualifications, and why you're interested in serving as a village trustee?
Well, I've been in Grafton for some time. Been involved with the village board, planning municipal, some of the committees for the taxation. Was the school board, traded for two terms. So I always thought that, since we're a little bit in town, we should get the interest in town. And I've always taken an interest, sometimes good, sometimes bad, but I always spoke my piece. I always listened to people. I never judged them on their appearance, or what they were going to do. I asked a lot of questions. I feel that the information that I have on the village of Grafton, and the surrounding area, would be helpful to people. I have a pretty strong financial background, for the, some of you older people here, if there's anybody that older members. I was the school business manager for seven and a half years, school board traded for three, two and a half terms. Run my own business pretty successfully, I think. We built a lot of homes in town, a lot of commercial. We always followed the rules. We never asked for anything that was on the line. Brought out three kids in town. Been married to the same woman for a long time. And I don't tell stories, I tell what I can, and that's why I think I can be pretty helpful to the village of Grafton.
Thank you.
Andrew. What do you view the role of trustee?
Well, it's a very good question. A trustee has to be able, he or she has to be able to listen carefully to people. And that's probably the biggest thing that people have to do, not just in the village of Grafton, not Wazaki County, not even in the federal government. You have to listen to people and hear what they have to say. And don't react immediately. Think it through. If you don't know the answer, don't answer. Tell them to get back to you. One thing I've found over the years is that people respect that when you say that you don't know. Because I don't know anybody in this group, and we've got some pretty smart people here that work. So I always said, "Well, if this is the question, and this is what you want to know, give me a hint here, two or three, and I'll get back to you." And then I'll go, and I won't go to just one source, and I'm not a Google person. And, and, and I'm not a real strong computer person, so everybody knows that's not really. And I will talk to people. I will look in books. I will gather whatever information I can, and I'll come back with an answer. But at the same time, when I come back with an answer, I'll still say that, is, did I answer your question? And if I did answer your question, I'll go back and start all over. And I'm not gonna take weeks in doing that, but one thing you can't do is make an assumption. Because every time you make an assumption, you're saying something that you really don't know is distorting. And one thing I don't do, Dave, is I don't do hearsay stuff. You know, I've heard so many people talk about me, and I, I talk about the time, and I know I'm a bit office, but I've talked about the time, many, many years ago, I was sitting in the Grafton hotel, and I was having lunch with Bill Lipp and another guy. There was a guy sitting at another table, and he's telling his two friends at the table what a painful superhero it is. And what a, this guy is, and all this other stuff. And I just sat there, and, hey, Bill Lipp, and I go back a long time. And I got up, and I walked up to him, and I says, "You know, pardon me, Jim, my name's Lou Harris. Nice to meet you." And he just, his whole face just lit. So he should, first of all, he should talk to other people. Second of all, if you're gonna answer somebody, you better have the right answer, or don't do anything else.
Thank you.
Okay, Lou, what do you see as the two biggest priorities the village board must address in the coming year?
Well, our, our village, you were talking about that, the other move, about when we first moved out here. The Schitt's Pavilion was out here, and it was a one-stop sign, and you had to town it. When the McDonald's came, they had to march you back from high school, because it was the biggest thing that happened. And so I think the one thing, Joe, is you gotta look at the growth path, okay? And I think you, and I, you've heard me say it before, so you know it's not by listening, I think Jessica and you and your staff is a great job. But I think we have to really look at the growth pattern. We have to look at the people that are coming to Grafton. You know, I think more people are staying here than leaving, okay? So we gotta look at our fire protection, that's the next thing, and our police protection. And I really push really hard on security, because I had that good fortune or misfortune from working in the city of Milwaukee for seven and a half years in the central city, on real estate face. And there's a guy at this desk sitting here, and one time I was being collected rent, and we had to do it with a sidearm. Okay, that's a long time ago. So Jim, I'm saying, we gotta look at the growth pattern, and I think that we have to make some adjustments on the growth as far as the services that are here, and what we're gonna do with the south end of the town. Okay, we're not Cedarburg, we're never gonna be Cedarburg, and we don't want to be Cedarburg. We want to be Grafton. So that's the first thing. The other thing is, we've got to take a hard look at the police department, fire department, and health and social services. Now, I know the village doesn't have a health and social services department, but they do work with the county. And the county is working very hard on that area, and they're gonna be in contact with all the states and villages. And one of the major concerns that we're having on health and even services is they've got people who are getting older. And the people who are getting older, sometimes they don't listen to their family or their kids. So what they do is they go up to the county, and they try to find out what to do. Then it comes back to the village, because if you don't have the places to put those people, then you got a problem. And so I'm gonna say it's gonna be your, your planning, and your, your social services, and, and I call it social services, and a police protection, and fire protection.
Thank you.
Hi. What do you like about living in the village of Grafton?
Well, there's a lot of things. That's a very good question. We brought out three kids in this town. And they were almost, they went to school, they were safe. My wife spent a lot of time when I was out of town, and I didn't have to worry about safety. We didn't worry about it. I didn't have to really be concerned about it. I like the fact that people help each other. I mean, I call them kids, two kids, they're, they're, they're a repair shop bird. And we were over there trying to help. You know, when people get sick or hurt, they come, you go to the funeral, people help, they go to the churches, they help. It's a safe community, it's a good community, it's, we're not overtaxed. Maybe some people think we are, but we're not. You get good services, you got a good police department. And the other thing that you got here is, look, when, when they were picking up leaves, okay? The guys driving those big pieces, you couldn't take care of them. They went bad, and cleaned them up themselves. I can tell you that I grew up in Milwaukee, and I remember when it snowed, we'd have the parker car on one side of the street or the other side of the street. And I think they thought it was funny when they plowed in, but it wasn't. So, a must of all living here is safe, it's great location, you know, it's a great location. The people are decent. You've got a good variety of stores. Now, I will say this, you know, in the intro. I would like to see more development of stores and restaurants in that go on the south end, and not so much along the highway anymore. But that's just me, okay? And I think it would be good for the area. As far as the residences here, you know, I always tell people, drive down the street, and if you see a whole bunch of cars with the wheels are off, or they're banged up, or the grass isn't covered, or any of that, just be bright. You don't see that here. You don't see it. People go on first down, or fifth down, or twentieth down, or whatever avenue you want, and everybody keeps the places up. So there's pride of ownership, and there's people care about it. And then you got the church situation. The church is helping. You know, I'm Catholic, that's a tradition, but I, I needed something from St. Paul's, I'm sure they'd help. You don't find that, believe it, you don't find that all over the place. That's really strong here.
As a board member, how would you deal with a recommendation from a board, commission, or committee, or department head with which you do not agree?
I, I handle it the same way I would with everybody, because if I'm fortunate enough to get this position, I represent the village of Grafton, not you, him, or her. So I have to listen to what everybody has to say, and I might not like you on this issue. Or I might not like what you're thinking about, but I promise you, and it's happened to me, and when I was on the foundation, it's happened when I was a, a school board, and it's happened in a county. I go through it carefully, and I will, I, I'm one of these pluses and minuses guys. I don't know, I'm from the old school, I always have that. Well, this is okay, well, this maybe not. This is okay, and then I add up all the numbers. And I say, "Well, what makes sense here?" Because if I don't like what you're proposing, or I don't like Jessica, what she's proposing, then I, I'm not representing everybody, because everybody in the room I might not like. So you gotta take a look at what you, gotta look at the end goal, okay? People don't look at the end goal. Sometimes you gotta do, I had this discussion with my son. Sometimes you do things with people who you don't like, but you do it because it's the right thing to do. And sometimes you do things with people who you do like, and sometimes their thinking isn't very good either. So you gotta look at the whole, whole situation. But I still go back to the old school. I always write things down, pluses and minuses, and I go for the summary. And then I look at what is the end goal, who am I gonna hurt, and who am I gonna help? But I never judge, I've been doing this for a long time. I deal with people, and some people I don't like. Some people don't like me, I know that. But I always do the best that I can, and that's how you're gonna ask for something. So that's how I do it.
Hi.
Hi.
If you have not attended meetings on a regular basis, are you able to dedicate the necessary time to attend village board and committee meetings, preparing for meetings ahead of time, and staying in regular communication with the village president and the administrator?
Good question. I don't mean to put this gentleman on the spot, because I've known him a long time, he's a good guy, he's, he's very good, just like the rest of you. I have, for the last couple of years, hold Mr. Brumkow, and I want to get more involved in the village. I'd like to be on the committee. I'd like to do this, I'd like to do that. I have more time now than I ever had before. I, my real estate practice has sort of slowed down. I haven't built a house in seven years, but we've been building five to ten houses a month. I don't plan on building any more houses. I pretty much can do what I want to do most of the time. I'm very involved in, in the county government. The main reason I got a- If I have a financial question, I'll call the finance director period of the meeting. If I have a question on planning, I will call Jessica. I mean, I don't make a spectacle of it, is what I'm saying, okay? The purpose of being on a Village Board, city, county, whatever, is to make sure that people who have questions, and they ask you those questions, you answer them. And the other thing you have to make sure of, is that you're spending the taxpayers' dollar wisely. That's a big, big thing. You know, people say, "Well, it's only fifty thousand dollars." And my response when they come to me, I say, "Well, if it's only fifty thousand dollars, here's how we can do it. You pay it fifteen in a county, he doesn't have to pay it." And pretty soon, everybody gets the, sits the understanding is that you've got to look at the dollars. Now, you can't be foolish on dollars, you've got to look at it. But spending the time, yes. I think the one thing I can add a lot of, because I know a lot of history of the community, and I know what's happened, good things, bad things, but once again, you shouldn't make a spectacle of yourself. Whatever you know, you should make sure that the right person finds out about it. That's my...
All right, thank you. So that's all six questions, so if you have a statement you'd like to make, then you are now of your time.
Well, and I really need this, I really thank you. I really want to do something, if it's this or something else, I have the time, I do it. I have an office that is pretty decent, and if somebody wants to come and see us, they can come and see us and see the old, what do you call it? I call it the tower, but it's a pyramid building, the old Grafton State Bank. We're pretty stable people. I've had my own percent of problems, business problems, and I've had good things happen, some bad things, but we always solve the problem.